I'd like to begin our meeting. I appreciate you being gracious and giving us a few minutes in between. I need a motion to reconvene open session. Make a motion. Thank you, Angie. And second, Beth? All in favor of reconvening open session? Thank you very much. Okay, so welcome. We're glad that you're here. Let's stand together and say the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, did we have any visitors signed up as you think? All right. And as far as I know, we don't have any special recognition. Is that correct? Okay. Screw you. All right. So we'll move on then to the consent agenda. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review all the items that were presented. So I'd like to have a motion then to approve all the action items on the consent agenda. Thank you, Beth. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Angie. Any discussion on the items listed?
Yeah, it's the minutes for August 8.
Okay.
I would just like under-
August 8, is that what you said? Sorry.
Under number five. I'd like the first part there when it says it was a consensus for the salary range. I just like if we're decided by, be used.
I'm not there yet, sorry.
You'd like to accept both three minutes?
Anybody have an issue with that? So you wanted to change it from consensus to decided by?
Same thing on part of D, it says in the consensus.
Well, they all say that.
Yeah.
Can I ask one?
Uh, because it implies unanimous.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Okay. So I guess if nobody has an issue, we'll change it. It's just letter A, correct?
Is that how you add it?
I think it consensus on A, B, C, and D.
Yeah, I still refer ahead of time about that.
Oh, okay. Okay, any other adjustments, corrections, questions? Very good? Okay. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Raise your hand, please. All right, very good. Okay, so that gets us then into our reports for the month. And Dr. Underwood is here this evening to present information on how things are going with the superintendent search.
Good evening, President. Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
It's been a busy two weeks. You know, I always like to make my services available full service. And so I want to start tonight with kind of a public service announcement for you all. Not as familiar with Hillsborough as you are, obviously. And so whenever I am in a new town, I like to give a restaurant review. So this evening, if you haven't tried the double pork bone and pork chop at the Russell House.
That was good.
Just want to go on record as saying you might want to look into that for your future dinner plans.
We have other good things.
They were very helpful. Never really sure what I'm going to get here, if I'm going to eat before or after. So thanks for the opportunity to be here. Let me, again, as I promised you in our previous settings, I try to put forward some sort of talking points agenda, whatever. That's as much as anything to keep me on point and from over talking, whatever it is I have been allocated in terms of time. So I know you have a lot to do tonight. We're going to be judicious with your time. We're going to go quickly. So if you have questions as I'm moving on, please shoot up your hand and stop me. Let's make sure you're on the same page as we are as we go through this, okay? A lot has happened in the two weeks that since I've seen you. It's been like two weeks and a day. Not only are the Cardinals on a really nice winning streak, but we can go to the Senate for all this, you know. I always hope for a red October. It's the cool people can speak to. It helps forever with morality, spirit, and everything else. But I wanted you to make sure that you were all familiar with and had seen some of the artifacts that were generated. You know, the posting went out. In fact, I think you have a copy at your place or have seen that already. Looks great. Again, thanks to Beth and Cherry and our office there in Columbia, they got that out. I mean, 24 to 36 hours from the time we had made all those decisions, determinations back on the age. That's really helpful because that just gets you and keeps you out front in terms of the search window. I heard today that the district on our side is going to have an opening. So, you know, it's important for us to keep that timing block where we are in terms of the window of opportunity as candidates look to perhaps change position or claim a new position or all those kinds of things that are available out there on the side. So I'm really pleased with the board's decision to be out early for us to get busy with our work. And so we have a lot to do between now and selection time, but I think we're at a really good pace and good start in terms of looking at that timing of it. Couple of things that, in addition to the posting that you had, you seen?
Sure, again.
This is pretty funny. I'm sorry.
No, it's not real boring.
Now, if you don't get the file photo I have on, that makes me look much younger than Ben. If you haven't, I spoke to some of your staff earlier in the hallway before the meeting began. I know some folks have already had the opportunity to see the online survey. That's a part of your link at your website. Make sure you tell your friends, tell the people at dinner, tell the people at football game. You know, we want them to have access to that survey. It's just a simple link to the site. Thanks to our pet folks and all the people who will make that happen very quickly. It's going to be up for a few weeks. Should provide everyone that is interested in having voice, some voice, okay? We don't want people to be out there saying, "Well, I didn't know anything was going on." Well, then you weren't paying attention because we're right at you and we're in your face and we want your input and feedback on what it is you think we should be looking for in our next superintendent schools. So remind folks that that's out there. We're also working on that three-fold brochure. Thanks to Beth for getting that information out. Our folks in the office will have that probably generated camera ready, ready to go by next week. So we'll get copies of that to you as well. And then I always know when the search has begun in earnest because my email volume and phone traffic volume begins to tick up. And I spoke to John about an upcoming conference that's going on. Once those folks are all together, it gets nutsy because, you know, it's all word of mouth and who knew where, where, so, so what happened there? So all that conversation will really enhance our opportunity for to get the candidate field moving in the direction we'd like for it to. I want to also recognize the board for their prompt attention to the piece of homework I left with you a couple of weeks ago. We did get all the surveys back on time and place and have them compiled. You've had an opportunity to take a look at those. I think I'll skip for just a second going through some of that, but I want to just highlight some of that so you have some sense of, you know, for the first time maybe, you as a seven-member board have an opportunity to look at others' collective thoughts. And it's now kind of summarized for you. We tried to prioritize some of that. I want you to think about what some of that looked like and sound like because that becomes the very first piece of that phase that I spoke about when I referred to as the profile phase. And by the way, a reminder, that's your constituency, your school board, your administrative team, your teachers, your community, your staff, your parents, telling me, telling us as a group collectively what we should be looking for in our next superintendent schools. And so that when I'm out on your behalf screening and vetting and interviewing and making site visits, I know what I'm listening for. So this becomes the very first piece of that, your survey results. The online survey becomes another piece. The focus groups that I'll end up with these people off to my left here in a sec will become another piece of that. And bit by bit, we put all it together and pretty clearly, by mid-September, I have a really good feel in the city of what it is that I should be looking for in terms of goodness of fit. We're going to have lots of people that apply for this job that are capable of doing the work. The key for us, the key for you hitting a home run in this thing is that we get the right person in who's going to be with us so that we provide that consistency to kids, to teachers, to our community that we need. You speak to that in some of your comments. Perhaps more than anything else, our next superintendent schools is going to be someone that has to reestablish that trust, that bond with our staff, with our community. I don't live here, I don't vote here, but I know that just from reading everything I've seen so far from the conversations I've had at the restaurants, from the people I've talked with. That is key, okay? So that's what I'm listening for early on. Wanted to remind you that we probably won't meet again for a while, though we will Lisa ask you to think about, maybe talk with the board sometime and if you care about when we might want to get together. I'll check your regular schedule. Beth gave me a copy of the calendars, so I'll look at that and we can talk in the future about when I might want to get back down here again for a little work sessions, check that with the timing of our application process, with the focus groups that I conduct. I'm going to provide those results back to you all so you can see kind of what the different groups are saying about the search. But in between our meetings, I'll try to provide Friday kind of updates electronically. I'll send them to Beth, Beth will send them to you. That way you'll have an idea of what, you know, going on in terms of the search, where I'm going in terms of the regional interviewing, whatever the case may be. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
Okay. So think about that in terms of what's next, those dates, times. I guess we'll talk about that. I've already spoken with John earlier this evening and he'll have an opportunity to get with him, listen and think about their upcoming administrative team schedules. You know, as much as we can, we don't want to pull these folks out of their building. So if I can plug into something they've already got scheduled, come down, make it happen an additional 30 minutes before or after the meeting, that makes sense to everybody so they don't have to be out away from the schools. So that will happen probably between now and the next time we have an opportunity to be, okay? Questions about any of that? Okay, let's cir- All right, see, I there it is. That's super tense, we taught that, you know, you ask a question and you keep talking. We're going to stop for just a second. Any questions about anything that I shared with you, the timing or anything, yourself? Okay, let's circle back to the search for just a second because I think it's important for us to spend a little time kind of reminding and highlighting for you all what it is that you saw, what it is, how it was that you responded, you know, collectively, had a chance to look at some of that. Four major categories there we ask you about right up front. One is communication, community engagement. One is district operations. One is leadership skills and one is the board superintendent relationships. Let's talk about kind of what I saw as I read through some of that. In that first section, communications and community engagement. Right off of that, number one thing, community-oriented person who has high interest, broad-range community groups. Again, you're saying to us, this person has to be able to come in, build relationships with across the different constituencies that we represent. That's the number one important thing for you, okay? Makes sense? I would imagine in the 25, 30 searches I've done, that comes up number one most frequently, okay? District operations academic programs. The number one prior to you said was have a thorough knowledge of and successful experience in sound district management practice. Well, makes sense, right? This is your chief operating officer. This person needs to be able to have some level of comfort in managing X number dollar budget, X number hundred employees, staff, personnel relationships, all those policies, all those things that come with sitting in the chair of superintendent. Three, leadership skills and personnel management. Look at two and three. Identical response there. You said these are the two most important things in that section. People, person, okay, consistent with what you've been saying and what we're hearing. And the ability not only to delegate appropriately, that's important, especially when you're a district of size where you have, you know, scores of people who report directly to you. But look at that last part of that sentence. Remaining accountable to the board for his or her actions and someone who's able to monitor results. So we want somebody who can look at the data and understand what that data is saying to us. Also hold people accountable for that data. You know, if I'm the superintendent of schools and I've got 10 principals that report directly to me, I'm the one holding them accountable for performance and student data resources. On board superintendent relationships, almost always the number one response comes up, what year is it, number four. Develop with the school board long and short-range district roles. And of course, in our setting now where you're coming off of separation, one superintendent is creating a relationship with another. You've got new board members, the board dynamic kind of changes with that relationship. That is an ongoing process, probably the most labor-intensive process that every superintendent spends the majority of his or her first several years dealing when they're in the chair. So it makes sense to me. We then move to asking you, if you can rank for us, what are some of the characteristics that this new superintendent should possess? What are some things we should be looking for on previous work history or resume? And you go back to right off of that, number one, integrity and high moral standards. So our chief operating officer wants to be somebody we can trust. You use words like integrity and high standards and moralism. What we're really meaning is, is this somebody I can put my trust in? Is this somebody I want to release my kid to in terms of being responsible? Second one you said was provide leadership and work in harmony with staff. People don't lose their job because they can't do the job. People lose their job because they don't get along with the people in the job. Look at the RAN study, every year, 95% of people lose their job. Every year, something like that. Third one, keeps a focus on student center success. What are we here for? We only have buildings, we only have schools because of the kids. Community systems, the best kids they have. It's our job to do the best work we can, okay? And that's obviously very important to you. Then you list some of the things in terms of characteristics. The things that I saw most frequently, honesty, transparency, creative problem solver. Think about those scenarios, situation that you're in currently. That, those are the things that you're looking for from your leader. We ask you to take a look at yourself in terms of the district and the board's assessment of some of the district's strengths. And one, two, and three, if you look at the consistency on that pattern in there, all are about what? People. It's all about people. You rate one, two, and three, your teaching staff, your administrators, and your support staff. Well, guess who works with the kids? Guess who makes the relationships with the parents? It's the people. This job will always be about relationships. It will always be about finding the very best people, putting in the right fit, and get the hell out of their way, let them do a good job. Well, you heard a little Brit is in there, but that basically is what good leadership is about. Get the right people in the right place, get the right, you know, on the bus, all the kinds of old saying. Then we ask you to make some other comments or some other things you think we should be looking for. Again, I'm looking for consistency in responses. Things that are duplicated in that prepared and thought. Very strong. You specifically talked about your central office team and how proud you are of them and the work that they're doing. The pride that your community has in the district and, you know, not wanting to lose that. You know, if it's waning, then we got to recover that. If it's losing, you know, those are the kinds of things that we do on a day-to-day basis. We don't win referendums in Aprils and Novembers in the five-week run-up to the election. We win them with the day-to-day decisions that we make. Does that teacher return the phone call? Does the principal help resolve the issue in front of him as a result? Every day, day in, day out, that's how we establish trust. That's how we establish a respect that our community wants to have in our schools. In a time like Hillsborough, you are the largest employer. You are the magnet for relationships. You have to be leading and you want your superintendent to be out the front of that. Then we ask you to talk about some of the challenges and weaknesses of your district. And you were pretty clear about some of the things that come through again and again. Trust gap. You know, trying to make some really difficult decisions about the use of resources that are pretty limited. I mean, the reality is, this isn't a flush, very affluent, you know, high tax rate school system. So you've got to make decisions that require some really difficult prioritization. Yet, at the same time, nobody's going to ask any less of you about student performance. They're going to expect that to continue to work, to rise. So those decisions you make about prioritizing and the decisions you make about the people you put in place will help move those numbers up or down. That's just reality. And if you're not going up, if you're not heading northeast, you're getting behind because the clock doesn't stay still. Everybody else is moving. The final thing we asked you to think about was the superintendent's first year. You know, as you look forward to the first year of building relationships and with the new superintendent, what are some things that you would like here she to concentrate on? And, you know, again, I highlighted, by the way, old-school low-tech, you know, marker and highlighter. So that's how I go back and look for my themes. I mean, reestablishing positive, trusting work relationships. Having an environment that allows risk-taking, yet holds us accountable for performance. Those are the kinds of things that you talk about, you get into more detail, and we can do that as we can here. But I don't want to get too muddled in the weeds because I want us to think about this being one piece of that profile puzzle. This is what collectively the seven-member board is saying. Let's hear what the administrators have to say. Let's hear what your teachers have to say. Let's hear what your community has to say on this survey coming back. And at the end of all of that, I would come back to you with that puzzle with all the pieces in place. And we should have a pretty good sense of what that profile looks like. That'll be a key meeting where we sit and talk about that. Makes sense to you?
Yeah.
Questions about any of that? Lisa, how am I doing on that?
You're fine. Did any of this surprise you?
No, I don't think so. I mean, certainly given, you know, the limited number of conversations that we had about how we arrived at this point. You didn't expect to be here six months ago.
Right.
Okay?
That's right.
You know, nobody was planning on doing a superintendent search in Hillsborough. So I know that the dynamics of that cause some angst. Change always provides angst for adults. And so, you know, some of the reflection, I think, in those comments are there, but they're also straightforward. You point the finger at self, not others. I like it when people look in the mirror first and know that, you know, hey, this board has to take on some of that responsibility as well. And in understanding that, this is the most important decision we're going to make. And I can just go out on a limb and say for 1890, okay? You won't make any other decisions more important than what we do in this search. Not this year. Okay? Does that make sense? Is that good for you? Helpful to have some of that in place? So I'll get with John. We'll set up some of these focus groups. We'll want to meet, you know, with staff a lot. We're also probably going to want to do a night where we open up, you know, the doors and say, "Hey, community, come talk to us." I would imagine you kind of nodded if that was something of interest for you last time we met. So we'll try to find some dates for that, too. That makes sense in the calendar that we can work around, you know, play on tickets. You know, we don't want to have a community forum night to night where we're playing the first game.
No. Are you providing tickets for us?
Yeah. No, I'm trying to steal my own. So we'll work on that. We'll make sure that we get that on your upcoming calendar. I'll work with Beth as I've been in terms of those updates. Lisa, if you have anything you want to ask about specifically, you know, please give me a call. And then John, I'll talk and work about some of these dates when she has a chance to meet you.
So you're thinking the next time you come, you will come, we'll be in another one of our boards?
Well, it certainly could be unless we feel like after talking with some of the focus groups and stuff that we need to have a special work session. But, you know, looking forward here, you've got something on the 25th. You've got something, you know, in October. So, you know, we can plug into those. That makes sense if it's not another night. Do you guys get out if it makes sense? If not, then we need special time. And there'll be some times, you know, eventually down the road when we'll be in closed session as well.
Right.
Okay? Anybody? As much as I love board meetings, I will excuse myself and find my way back at 21, okay? Thank you. Good to see you.
Thanks again. So I'm assuming then we don't, we still have our, what is it, the 12th, September 12th? That may be something we want to keep open after we talk about board goals and whatnot. We'll see, we'll decide if we want to continue that date or not, okay? All right. We'll move on then to Director Beth hearing the report on him.
Good evening.
Hey.
We have videos and not you, right? Just love videos. It's good to talk to you. All right. This week, this past month and everything, we've been pretty good shape. School started, actually, good start. I think all the buildings went very smooth, we're on our hand. We put our, we signed each one of our team leaders, which is part of our maintenance team now, in their own buildings. And that seemed to help out a lot in case you have any questions. They could get settled in real quickly, so it wasn't a while. So we're very proud of that. We think the buildings look real good to start this year. We hope that for the ones you get to see, I hope that you felt the same way. We thought they were sharp looking this year considering what we went through with the construction. Keep us locked tight during summer. We thought the custodians and the staff did an outstanding job. So this is all records, I think, into them. And I hope you guys enjoyed it as well as we did. So we're pretty proud of them. Victory Church is also one of our co-helpers. As everybody knows, sometimes it's their third year. Working with them in July, they come in and help us do landscaping, some painting. They came into high school this year as well, helped us out again. So we're proud of that group, their servant community. And they're part of us as well and they help us a lot. So we're going to show you a few pictures of some of the things they did, doing a little bit. But they do help us a lot and this is their third year. We're really enjoying working with them as well. So we thank them very much. The restrooms and so forth at the high school, we wanted to just kind of be a little surprised because you all know we had some issues last year, maybe the last couple of years. Try and get the restrooms where the public was really proud of them. They could use and they felt good at the high school outside the gym area. So we went in and actually redid them this year. We've got a couple of pictures. I'll show you in case you hadn't seen them in person. We think they're going to be awesome this year, so no complaints this year. Any gap ramp, we did get it set. This was for the high school as well on the southeast corner. It was requested to have that because of the drop-off over there for the students that need to be, have that capability. So we have got that in place. We do have some more signing to put in play. We've got parking lot spots, mark offs, so you can't park in them unless you're in the gap. Successful. Works out good. One good thing we got is the junior high. We've got the drainage ditches all taken care of. We've got that little problem we had where the drainage ditch was going across the roadway. You might remember that, where the speed bump was. Had a little issue with that a little while back. We've got a concrete curb there now. The drain system goes all the way under it and everything. So it's all more solid and everything. So go access the speed bump a little bit to slow down traffic so we can keep the kids safe. But it also works better that way. Everybody don't have to hit those grates and maybe knock them in again. So we should be good there. I'd like to say on behalf of Mrs. Jackson and the food department and us all, we'd like to thank the board. They got their new dishwasher. It looks great. So they're really happy to, by the way. We did get the gas finally hooked on today. As the junior highs, you know, it might have been off because of construction. They have been fine guy here, got the meter in place. They got the service back on. So we can get all, make sure everything's all hooked up and running properly. It's all expected and went well. Two little minor issues they had, they felt like we needed to make sure we addressed. That's just painting it, making sure we're identifying the couplings, which is normal standard procedure. And there was one valve they had to bring up about 18 inches off the deck of the roof. That's in case there's snow levels and that's a cold that they have to follow. So they got to raise it up about six inches. Everything was good. So we're really happy with that. Intermediate, I wanted to say thank you to their crew and the custodians there as well. Again, first year they had summer school. We know we did put them through a little bit of a challenge as well as the teachers, getting all their stuff over there, too, and getting them back. We had to strip out stuff out of the primary, about 12 tables and 300 chairs. All set that, so they had to get back out of the way, the custodians and the staff. And we're really proud of them. So it looked good. They did a great job getting us all back together. I think Scott's happy with this building, hopefully he'll share.
Right here.
Elementary in that area. We'll show you some more pictures there. We've got the playground, all good, all good. There's still a few things we got to replace. We've got some steps replaced. We've got a couple of hanging bars to replace, an elementary one. We have the parts. We should go get to them here next few days, hopefully, weather provided. The new RTU for the new area is coming in Monday. So we get our first RTU and we'll put it in place on Thursday next week. So they'll have a new one. Not the one for the new classrooms, the one for the office. They'll be up soon as they get their office. Primary also has the same thing with some playground equipment. Um, primary also has the same thing with some playground equipment. We had ordered new parts for that one. Uh, there's a few things over there that need to be fixed, we have those, we'll be getting all that all together pretty soon as well. Um, we were informed at the last, uh, destruction meeting that Brock Miller's taking us down to two superintendents, uh, so, three. We used to have one for each job site, uh, they'll be going down to two in the second week of September. Um, that'll be okay, there'll still be a little handleup needs to be done, uh, and they'll keep the staff going, and of course, we'll still doing their checks. By driving, still brand components do all the checks, making sure that they're staying on track, of course, um, so, we, we'll make sure that they're staying there, so, but they'll be okay with two. Uh, while we were playing around with the construction, we did away about ninety-four ore quarters, a little slower than mine, but we did do about five hundred and fifteen of the summer months, so, that was okay. Uh, we did dub check all the fire alarms, uh, they're all working in all these buildings. Uh, that was one question a lot of people had concerns about, of course, uh, as you do new construction, you have to shut down fire alarms, get them back on play, they all are online, PNS is hitting all the signals, we're good to go. Uh, state's been in, dub checked all the borrowers, make sure they were all good, those are all passing, so, our inspections look good. Um, and I guess we're about ready for video. You guys ready? We'll show you a few pictures, what we got, short one, not too big. There may not be any music this time.
Let me just sing.
You can sing.
No.
By the way. This is the primary and everything, this is kind of our office, now they don't have any furniture in them at that time, but. Classroom's come along really well back there, they've got that done. Uh, that's part of this, the back hallway, they painted the archway back there, let's really fill it blue and then it'll, it'll go over the top. That's a bright joy of the area, believe it or not. That's why we use that, okay? That's the walkway that was put in to help the students get from, to the playground at the elementary, to Mud.
And see.
Yeah, that's what they walked in last year. That's where the roof's going on, to junior high. That's the old switch gears and a new one. The new one's really impressive, by the way, so, thank you. That's what they look like on the right, as you can tell, they're very sparkly nice. Can't tell that much, but that wasn't dishwasher, it's a hard shot. Uh, that's the new four-year area if you haven't been to the high school, if you haven't seen that one up there, it looks really nice. Uh, the locker room's finally got painted, we started a little bit last year, it's gray on top and blue on bottom, and then that's the hallway to the main office at the, at the high school, it's got painted this year. This is some of the groundwork that Victory Church did for us, looks really great. They also did that's painting, um, they have taped, taped up all the white, looks really good. So, we felt like the high school looked really good this year. So, the state hallway, they went through down, all three, got all the pencil marks all done, looks good. So, that's what we're seeing so far, so, looks really good. Uh, we feel really good, comfortable this year, so, on behalf of the art team and us, we thank you all for being supportive of us, and thank you for the time and words coming in, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Lovely, thank you.
Thank you.
Go get it.
Okay, we'll move to the technology report from Director Ray.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. Um, our primary focus obviously has been on the, we setting up of all the technology equipment, and we've had to work pretty close with Ray and follow behind them, so, as rooms got finished, we were able to get into them and set them up. And the other big focus has been on the new year setup, getting all the computers set back up, and then, in addition to that, we have like over eight different software programs that we have to either import data or make sure they're syncing correctly to get all the student rosters updated. And as far as training, Karen Fryner did a training class for all the secretaries on Moses and attendance, and now our focus is on ore quarters. We've done one hundred and thirteen in the past seven days. We have a lot of them in there.
Seven days.
Yeah. It's been crazy.
Sounds like that.
Any questions?
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you, guys.
Um, our finance report with Kelly Ginn.
I'm gonna get Kathy a copy of that.
Okay, sure.
I was a little late getting this out to you because I was struggling a bit with the financial system and all the coding changes with Desi, and if I didn't have budget numbers in there, you wouldn't have much left, so. So, this is just for July, um, that is why there's no graphs, because I've put everything in there and it doesn't even put a dot on the graph, so, next month you'll see some comparative data to how we're trending with previous years. Um, we're just getting started, so, as far as how we're trending on our budget, it's completely fine, as expected. Our expenses are a little higher, I think that's due to just, we're purchasing more stuff right off the bat, some technology things, just some different purchases that we had planned, so, not a big deal. Uh, beyond that, we got our assessed valuation after the board of equalization from the county. I just got that on the seventeenth, so, um, our overall growth is a little under three percent, which for a non-reassessment year is probably what we would expect, would hope to be a little higher, but, um, our personal property took the biggest increase. People are still buying things, that's good. Um, so, real estate didn't increase quite as much, but the only changes with that is gonna be new construction and any revaluations from property, um, due to additions, different things that might change on property, so. Other than that, I don't have a whole lot for this month. We're gearing up for our audit next month, so, that'll be mid-September.
That'll be fun.
It'll be, it will be fun, yeah.
I said fun.
Oh.
Okay, thank you very much.
We do have a report.
Okay, awesome. That's awesome. I'm excited.
Okay, so, one thing that we are looking at starting, we've been working with Dr. Freeman, and I contacted a teacher named Ms. Myers, she works with the special education, 'cause we wanted to start something called a coffee shop, so, it would just be like, um, a good way to raise money for the school. It's, uh, simple drinks, nothing with like blenders or anything like that, but just iced, hot, and it would like open in the morning between like first breakfast and second breakfast, and, uh, we thought it'd be a good way to help like teach like time management skills and responsibility to that department of children and stuff like that.
So, just a quick update on the positivity week we touched on in earlier meetings. Um, we are working with student council to make the week possible, and we have picked a week for this week. Uh, it's gonna be the week before homecoming week, so, yeah. And we have, um, some activities planned already, and I'm really excited about what's coming together.
Oh, awesome. That sounds awesome. So, two busy weeks.
Yeah.
And, so, you're working with Dr. Freeman, you said, all of these things, very good. All right. Thank you. Thank you. I believe that concludes all of our reports for this evening. Um, we don't have any unfinished business, so, we'll jump right into the new business section. The first item has to do with setting, um, a date for the tax hearing. Um, it was determined or thought that we could set the tax date hearing as September twenty-fifth at six-thirty in the learning center. That, this is something we do every year, so, that has to do with the tax lobbying, so. Um, do I have a motion then to set the date for the tax rate hearing on September twenty-fifth at six-thirty in the learning center?
I think the motion's second.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that's fine. Right. Any questions about that? That's kind of a cut and dry thing. All right, all in favor of setting the tax rate hearing date as September twenty-fifth? Okay, perfect. We'll move on then to approving the transportation routes. Hopefully, those are all finalized now, right? Do we know okay with those?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, the bus routes were presented to you, and we need to approve them, so, do I have a motion to do that for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen bus routes as presented? Second. Thank you, John. Beth, second.
I just have to say, I know I gave you a hard time about, she changed my bus number, my bus driver, and my bus route. What are those, too much change? But the kids are doing great. I wanna thank you. They're doing great.
Thank you. Well, it's hard to get them all out, especially at the beginning of the year.
With all those changes.
Right. All right, so, thank you for all you do with that.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor then of approving the new bus routes as presented? Thank you. Item C, um, has to do with the National Athletic Directors Conference. We're given that information, so, um, let's make a motion, and then we can discuss any questions that you might have.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second. Okay, so, we're approving, approving Mr. Marino attending the conference in San Antonio, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, in the first and a second? Any questions?
Is this an every other year thing, or is it a?
I'm part of the national chief faculty, and I'll be presenting this year, so, it was, it was last year as well, um, that's why I presented to Mr. President this year. And it was on the athletic advisory council, which helped set up the conference.
Any other thoughts? All right, so, let's then vote, um, to approve Mr. Marino attending the conference. All in favor? Item D has to do with the SRO contract, and we've had some recent developments in that, so, Dr. High's going to share some things with us first.
All right, I sent the contract to you, we included it in the board packet, um, there were some changes that your board attorney requested that we see some language, and I sent it to Sheriff Marshak, and we corresponded again today, I asked if we could get that back from them, they have subsequently sent it to their attorneys, um, and he said that they hadn't, they have several legal issues going on, and so, and I asked, will we have an SRO absent a contract if we table this, and just ever he said absolutely, so, I would ask that we table that, so you have the updated contract rather than approving something with the changes having made.
Is everybody okay with that?
I'm okay.
Okay, thank you. Second, second? Thank you. All in favor of table? Okay, thank you. All right, so, that bumps us down then to, um, the discussion that we need to have about an additional SRO.
As you know, our, our second shift, um, security officer resigned from her position, and I guess it was late last week, Chief Hut, um, deputy chief for the city of Hillsborough, came and met with, with John and I and asked when the contract would be coming to the board. As you may remember, they used to provide our SRO services until we went Jefferson County. So, we told him that we were bringing in information to you tonight, he left, we started talking, um, and put some numbers together. The total salary, um, compensation for that second shift security guard is anywhere between thirty-two and thirty-eight thousand, so, we are proposing instead of doing that, um, Chief Hut got us the number to provide an additional, um, police officer to our campus, and our thoughts are to have that, um, a second shift person, one to nine, two to ten, something like that. Inevitably, our, um, some of our issues don't stop when Officer Marino leaves at three o'clock, still have other buildings in session, um, along with some sporting activities. So, he quoted us a price of thirty-three, five ninety, so, you're looking, um, we, we are right within that range. We do not have a contract with them at this time or anything like that. They do have a, um, a school, an SRO school, that he would need to send one of his officers to, and that is in early September, um, so, we are asking that we not replace the second shift security officer and instead add a, a uniformed police officer.
So, if something happens at the junior high and our SROs at the high school?
Right.
Well, what can happen in two minutes?
Sure.
So, are you gonna have one on each side of it?
Well, we're gonna have one from seven to three, and then the other one in the afternoon.
With some overlap, right?
With some overlap.
Mm-hmm.
But we have an officer in the evening time.
We have an officer in the evening time as well. Yes.
I think that sounds like a really great idea.
Can you say, and I would say about five days, or something around that maybe?
Yes, I think, I think, um, previous was on the high end, and so, yes.
Do we need to pay for the SRO training at school, or is that something they pick for?
The city of Hillsborough, police department, please refer that, please.
And there is a little difference, I guess, the thirty-three thousand five ninety is for a school year cost of a hundred and eighty days. So, um, those numbers of thirty-two thousand to thirty-eight, if we were hiring somebody that includes a salary and the benefits, that is over the summer as well, that's the two hundred, so, we wouldn't have that summer nighttime, but, working with Chief Hut, uh, I mean, they're excited as well with the potential that we will have, you know, a request, and we drive to our property, and I don't see an issue with that as a big.
It'll improve the relationship.
Yeah. I like the opportunity to be part of your relationships there.
Yes. Beginning of.
It's nice, I think that's a great idea, so. Can we gather some input from all of our administrators, and, as well as Mr. North, the current security officer, and may we all, in your favor?
Okay. So, um, in the meantime, are we just gonna use status for second shift, or?
How soon will it start?
Because if he doesn't get a SRO training till September, that still leaves us a gap of time without that coverage.
Right, and Mr. Morris is doing that on his own right now, but certainly we can look into, you know, helping him out with different things, you know, football games, one of them, those are a couple weeks at home, having part of the employees.
We'd be in the middle of that process of hiring someone anyhow between now and September four, anyhow, yeah.
So, do you need to get the approval from us to go forward?
Well, I think it'd be, we'll bring it in September with the SRO contract. This is, the discussion was to get comfort from the board to contact the city and say, hey, send a, an individual to SRO, we'll work out the details in the next month and finalize that.
I think that would be a great thing. A needed addition. So, that moves us down then to, um, the contract with the EPA. It was presented to you as an executive summary to, um, approve this agreement. Um, it was a release for thirty-eight thousand, is that what it was, a release? I thought they were paying us thirty-eight thousand.
They are.
Okay.
Um, what this is, forgive me.
No, go ahead.
What this is was, when we did the lead removal from the football field, the trucks going in and out, uh, kind of our asphalt, did a number to it, um, they haven't been out to fix it, and basically, um, said, they get some bids, this is what it costs, we'll give you the money, you're responsible for fixing it.
So, we're releasing them from?
We're releasing them from, um, having to come and fix it, they're, say, we'll issue a check, it's your responsibility to get.
Now, we don't have to go with the bids that I've received.
No, Mr. Beth, do you wanna speak to?
That's what I was, right now.
Still, we don't close the question, so.
Um, the bids regarding asphalt.
Yes, they're, they're, they were done the same way we do everything, there's thirty-three bids, uh, they went directly to Mr. Bach and his committee, and they would pick that person, or team, company on their asset, so, they were the one actually who would pick whom they thought would be, when the contracts are, they base on the dollar amount, and then they would offer the school district pretty well in the middle. So, in other words, what they did, they took all three of them, took the average, and that's where they come up with that number.
That's right.
That's what we did.
And to your question is, they would send us the check, and, and Mr. Beth and I have talked about this, we may not do the rotor repairs, you know, depending on, we have construction going on, that's not our focus, we're probably there a month old, would have to go, they rebid this.
Right.
You know, 'cause they would expire, so, there could be some variance in cost of, ultimately, when we do it, it could be more than three thousand, or it could be more, or it could be less, I mean, that's, um.
We don't have to go with? We don't have to go with...
Any one of those, that could probably gonna have to resubmit bids because of the timing. But the EPA should give us thirty-eight thousand dollars today, you know.
So they can be done. Okay, so then, the recommendation is for the board to approve the agreement and release for restoration of real property at the southwest Jefferson County Mining Supervision Site, is that correct? And they're going to give us a check for thirty-eight thousand dollars, one hundred and sixty. Thirty-eight thousand, one sixty. Okay, thank you. Angie, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor of approving this agreement and release? Thank you very much. Next item has to do with construction change orders. We've given a list. John, do you have things you want to talk to us about those, or anything?
No, the change orders have, the number of them has slowed down significantly. I guess we had a small one today, how Mr. Best set up for some cabinets for about a thousand dollars, but these are, we're kind of reaching the end of the road, hopefully. Anything you'd like to add to that?
There may be a few more small ones, but they'll be minor. But what they've done with technology, that was the biggest one, making sure they get all the drops that they need in the classrooms. I think the technology department's done good with Matt and Rick. So I think we'll see a problem with that much. That's usually where you run into a little bit of issues. All the rest of cabinry and paperwork, should be pretty comfortable in time.
So we're almost at forty thousand dollars this time around, thirty-nine, nine, eleven.
What does that leave?
Just about one ninety-three. Kelly, still waiting for an updated solid number, but we figured it'd be about one ninety-three-ish. So we're okay.
Okay, so I need a motion then to approve the construction change orders. Any other thoughts? All right, all in favor of approving these change orders? All right. The next item has to do with adopting a resolution to dissolve facilities authority. And Kelly, is there something you need to talk to us about that?
Yeah, I'll try and explain this, that did...
Okay.
Had its frame. I contacted Sean Gilmore Bell, who kind of facilitated that whole lease transaction. They're the ones that set up the escrow account for us to pay those leases off. And Beth had gotten some paperwork for us to file with the state, the corporation stuff, which is a biennial filing. And Sean told me that back in two thousand four, when we bought the leases, schools couldn't stash tour leases by them. So that's why this facilities authority was set up to run that transaction, basically. I think they have a meeting once a year, is that right, Beth? They meet once a year. We have to file that paperwork. It really isn't necessary at this point anymore, because I guess law has changed. If we would ever enter into a lease agreement again, we wouldn't need the facilities authority in order to do that. So Sean said that they would be happy to, you know, create the memo, which I think the copy of that is in here, and do all that for us for no cost. Because I'm like, we just need to take care of this, tie up this loose end and move forward. So I think they have to have a meeting. There's some paperwork type things that we have to do. Basically, I have to get up to date on the filing, which is a small fee of the secretary of the state, like twenty-five or fifty dollars or something. And then we can do it, I'll take care of it.
Okay, so we need...
If that kind of makes sense.
We need a motion then to adopt the resolution authorizing the dissolution of the facilities authority.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Angie. Beth. Does anyone have any questions, concerns about this topic? Okay, all in favor of adopting the resolution? Very good. Okay, the next item has to do with... Oh, never mind. The next item has to do with approving stipends for some of our staff members who are taking on additional responsibilities since Dr. Kornman's exit. With him not being here, there have been extra responsibilities that have been divided. We didn't hire an interim superintendent, so duties have been divided. And so, I need a motion then, from the board, to have stipends for three personnel, Ray, John, and Melissa, to help with their additional duties. A stipend of seven thousand dollars to be given in one lump or two lumps, or two lumps. We'll use a stick when we get those lumps. So they can choose whether to take it all at once or in two sessions, stipends.
Second.
Okay.
Second, seven thousand individually.
Correct. Each candidate or each employee will have a stipend of seven thousand dollars. So were you my first?
I will be, I've had Angie's license, but I didn't hear or do that yet. Okay, I'm the first.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay, so is there any other discussion that you'd like to make here at this time?
I think it's just time to say thank you for what's to come and what you've already done.
For all the extra hours and the extra time spent. And we are very grateful for what you are doing and have done and will be doing. Okay, so this one-time stipend for this school year, seven thousand for Ray, John, and Melissa. All in favor? All right, motion carries this. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, our last item for the evening has to do with goals that we would like to set for ourselves, things that we would like to see accomplished. Obviously, our biggest goal right now is to fulfill the position of a superintendent. We're working hard at taking care of that. But there are some other goals. There's the traditional goals of student performance and, you know, taking care of all of those responsibilities. But I think this year we have started a little bit of a trend on building relationships and improving those relationships with our staff and teachers and our students as well. And I would like to see that continue and us to focus on that aspect of within. We have lots going on, and we've had lots of hurt over the year, lots of sadness. And we need this to be improved, I guess you could say. But I'd like to hear what some of your thoughts are. I know Rob had something specific he wanted to share with the group as to a direction that the board should get involved in. So if you want to go ahead and share.
Well, I'm a classic example of a parent that wanted to do awesome things for our kids. We got on the school board to realize we're bogged down with finances and legal and policies. That's all important, but I want to challenge the board that this year, we think outside the box and focus on something for this, just for the kids, something to make a difference. And I think that some things we can do for the kids will ultimately affect test scores or absenteeism or whatever. I just got some notes I'll read to you. Like to see a focus on the emotional health of our kids and work towards a general respect of each other. If you think about it, when these kids were three, four, or five years old, even in the kindergarten, first grade, they were all friends. It didn't matter what kind of home they lived in, the type of car the parents drove, who was good at what sports, they were just friends. As they got older, society started telling them who they should be friends with. Parents started leading their kids who they should be friends with. As time goes on, the different cliques, groups, teams, et cetera, friendships change, and so does the way they treat each other. Hillsborough's got very wealthy people, very poor people, even homeless people in our district. This can make the differences between kids even more drastic. I want to try something outside the box, remember everyone that at one time they were all friends and all shared common ideas, likes, et cetera. What's it look like? I'm not exactly sure, but I've got ideas. One is to make sure the board supports everything that our admin and staff do for the kids. My daughter, Emma, she's a co-president of student council this year with Haley Boyd. I know these two girls want to make a big difference in their school or senior year. And student council is a great group that encompasses the whole school, along with our student board members, are a great representation, as well as many others who want to play a part. One thing I was excited about is last week talking to Mrs. Freeman, is that they've already started this year. I mean, they're pushing love and respect for the kids big time. A couple of things I had, there's a guy named Houston Kraft. My daughter heard him speak at the Missouri Student Council Leadership Conference. He calls himself the kindness advocate, and he's put together the love challenge, and he's also put together a character curriculum that is absolutely amazing. If you look him up online, there's probably eighty videos, and I've watched most of them, and half of them make you cry. But I would love to find a way to get money to have him come and speak with the kids. And even look at this year-long curriculum. There's videos that administrators have shown that over time, this curriculum has risen, has caused their scores to rise, and their absenteeism to go away, and just an amazing amount of respect that the students have for each other. It has a cost, but I think our kid are worth it. It's something to look at. Houston Kraft.
Is it through twelve, or is it just secondary?
It's six through twelve. Which is when these changes, I feel sorry. I got another idea that doesn't cost us anything. You know, not every kid can be the quarterback on a football team, or cheerleader, in band, et cetera. We do a great job of celebrating the kids that accomplish great things in these positions. However, we have amazing kids in our district that do amazing things outside of school that everyone should know about. How many kids are not able to participate in school functions, but have amazing talents that they can't celebrate with their friends? We have kids that have sung at Carnegie Hall, traveled the country winning horse shows. We've got a lady that trains and shows bulls at the county fair and wins every year. We have kids that go to third world countries on mission trips, kids that do super cool internships, kids that donate time at hospitals, nursing homes. Why can't we, instead of celebrate just the activities that happen in school, but create a community for the kids? And we celebrate those things too. And will that increase their morale or their excitement, maybe, you know, make them feel better, more connected than they would otherwise? That one's free. And you know, I've even spoken with, the YMCA has super cool team building programs. I know we've used them for staff, I've been part of them before. But they've got programs for the kids too, taking kids from different backgrounds and different talents, and making them work together and respect each other more. If we can work on the emotional strength of the kids, I truly believe that many other goals in our district will begin to fall into place. It's a shame that this new epidemic of parents leaving it to the schools to raise our kids has become so prevalent. Our schools are working so hard at this, but our teachers and staff can't do it by themselves. And I just like us to try to try to help.
Thank you for sharing those, thank you. Does anybody else have any thoughts or suggestions or ideas that they have?
I'd like to see us continue to grow professionally as a board. I think we've made great strides in attendance at, you know, the conferences and put on by MSBA, and I'd like to see us continue to be active in that board growth, I guess. I think we, you know...
We've come a long way with that.
We've come a long way, and that, I think, they offer programs and things that could tie in with what Rob's talking about, ways to build emotional, I guess, better emotional growth with kids. And I think, you know, I'd like to see us continue to do that.
Well, Angie kind of sent this to me, and I kind of sent to some of you. We have, we, I felt like we really, with the Hillsborough comedians, part of them sitting over here the other day, to welcome back, and my thirty-five plus welcome backs I've been to in my career, plus being here.
I thought they were completely serious.
Oh, my gosh. I mean, we had fun, and I would hope that that is going to be setting the stage for the enthusiasm that staff always brings, but gosh darn, you know, it's good to laugh. And Angie had sent a link that kind of, I think it was the Francis House School District, that their board did a little lip sync, and then listened to what Rob said, and, you know, talking, we could, you know, do something such as that, but include kids, include the staff, and, you know, build on those relationships, you know, with the community as well. There was a part of me that at first was like, oh, gosh, that's gonna put more responsibility on some people that probably don't have the time to do that, but then as Rob was talking, you know, I think that we could tie all that together and get some of the kids involved, get the administrators involved. And, you know, we are a team. Education is a team, and not just, you know, administrators versus teachers versus, you know, school board, et cetera. And we all need to work together.
Our community is part of the team as well.
Yes, very much so.
I'd like to agree with those two, I mean...
Yes, definitely. But I don't know about you guys sitting out there, but I had fun. I was afraid that Danny and Kristen weren't able to meet up with our Hillsborough comedians on staff, but they kind of held it. And those of you that weren't here, John wasn't there, Jane wasn't here, but you really missed...
It was a great day.
It was really, it was really good experience.
Yeah.
But to keep that upbeat atmosphere throughout the year.
Positiveness, that you can still do your job, but have fun doing it, because that's what education is.
And the job is easier when you're having fun doing it.
And just like Rob said, that student score's improved when, you know, staff is on board with what's going on.
I have to say, the communication so far this school year's been wonderful, from everyone, on Facebook, from emails to, you know, tweets, you name it. Even communication on buses are running five, ten minutes late, or behind because of an accident that didn't involve our buses. I would like to see our... accident that didn't involve our buses, I would like to see our communication continue like that. That's one positive I've heard from all of my neighbors is, wow, they're letting us know before we start asking, it's great.
Well, that was one of our things in the past about being retroactive.
The communication's very proactive this year.
That's right.
And the other one I had written down was safety, which that has been, is being addressed with some of our bond issue and the restructuring of our entrances to the building, but also the sheriff or the Hillsboro policeman instead of just simply a security officer, you know, another...
Oh, working with the community now, that's a good thing.
Yes, that partnership is part, it's very important. We need to build that, that hasn't been built over the last several years.
Well...
So you did the ones.
So we have, we have several here. And my thought was, we can narrow some down or we can kind of all mold them together, but we'll need a plan. What are we gonna do? What are, what actions are we gonna take and, you know, if we did a lip sync thing, that's a one-time thing, there's gotta be some other items that we do, you know, that we, we do for our kids and for our, our teaching community here, we, you know, and you and I talked about, you know, it doesn't have to be big, but as, as board members, showing up in a, in a building one day and greeting them or, you know, handing out apples, just, you know, just making that, that contact to say, "Hey," you know, "I'm making a great day and we're, we're proud of you and we appreciate you," you know, those kinds of things, because they don't see that from us, you know, not very often anyway. And hopefully that will go a long way as well and...
Donuts!
See, don't ask about apples here. Food always helps.
Nachos!
So I was thinking apples for our health and wellness.
Not really.
Yeah, would you like a mint? Do you need a vodka?
I heard peach slices go a long way.
Do what?
Peach slices?
Oh, peach slices.
Yeah, it'll be good.
Some smoothies maybe, right? Well, so I don't know if you want to map that out this evening or if you want to develop another session. We still have that, that second Wednesday where we could sit down since, since Dr. Underwood isn't going to need us for that, that that would be the night.
That would, I think that this is something we need to develop since, or a lot some time too.
I, I agree.
It's all right, I'll give John the link to Houston Kraft if he can send it.
We, we have it. He has one already and then we can, we can watch that, that night and we can talk about, or if you want to watch it now, we can, how long is it, Mrs.? Yes, ma'am?
Houston's coming to Millville High School on October twenty-ninth for training and...
Really?
I don't, yeah, I just got that email today, so I sent it to my team and my counselors asking for a couple of people to go, but I sent it to all the principal and you. I think it would be amazing if we district-wide put a team together because...
Well, that'd be awesome, but as a group, a board group, we don't know what it is yet, you know, so we, we need to learn about...
Absolutely.
You know, what he's doing and...
I just wanted to let you know he's coming to me.
And that's awesome. And, and I think having a team to come and work with us with that would be, or just have a team with a few board members on it to get things started too. I don't, I don't care, but I think the idea is, is great. You're not going to hurt anything by doing that, I don't think, it's only going to improve things. So, my thought was then to meet the second Wednesday and we can, can build on what we've started here and get an outline and get some things going.
This'll be September the twelfth?
Yes.
Six o'clock, maybe?
Yes, that's what we've been doing. Is everybody okay with that? And, you know, we have to have a time to work on our, our video as well. We don't want to do that in front of everybody, have to have some surprises.
Yeah, don't talk about um, choice.
Right. Okay. According to my agenda, that was the last item. Sir?
On the, on the lift though?
Oh, yeah.
What is the timeframe and can we coordinate and put our student advisories in that? Maybe I can coordinate with them?
Oh, right, absolutely.
So we can get started on laying the groundwork and have it?
A few little song snippets maybe and to do a mashup.
I can send you a list of songs.
Yeah. We, we have a costume department, Justin?
Oh, yes. And we have videos.
Well, because the thought was to maybe include students and staff from each building, do one little snippet at the primary and then another one at the elementary, and so everybody is included. She's smiling, so she likes the idea. Okay. Okay.
Which could be scary.
Okay, so maybe you won't look quite so much like flowers.
Well, we might.
We might, we might, but alrighty. So I need a motion then to adjourn. Thank you, thank you, all in favor?
Eight twenty-six.
Very good. Thank you for your attendance this evening, so if you had to come at all.